A quorum of the planning.
Sorry.
Yeah. A quorum of the planning commission is physically assembled. And we have received a request from a commission member to participate electronically. So do I have a motion for approving the request to participate electronically? Do I need, I'm sorry, I think I should say that it's Gary Lister that is going to participate electronically. Do I have a motion?
I so move that Gary Lister can participate electronically.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, Mary agrees. You?
Louis Hall.
Don Drayer, aye.
Katie Wilson, yes.
Okay.
I don't know if I vote or not on that, but if I.
Yeah, no, you don't.
Oh, you don't.
She doesn't vote if she can participate.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But now she's participating.
Okay, the request by Gary Lister to participate electronically has been approved and begins the regular meeting agenda. So now we'll do the roll call. And that will be Mary Hansen.
Here.
Don Drayer.
Here.
Katie Wilson.
Here.
Gary Lister.
Here.
And Louis Hall, here. And the first.
Pardon, Louis, I just need to, um, Gary, can you, we need to state while you're out, if it's for a medical reason, you do not have to say what it is. Why are you requesting to participate electronically?
So is it better than that say, or did, I am requesting to participate electronically for a medical reason. I had a fall and it's difficult for me to get to town hall.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So for the agenda. We need to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And now the vote, Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Don Drayer.
Yes.
Katie Wilson.
Yes.
Gary Lister.
Yes.
And Louis Hall, yes. Okay, and then we have the draft minutes from the previous meeting on February the thirteenth. So do I have a mission, a motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth planning commission meeting?
A motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And then the vote, Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Don Drayer.
Yes.
Katie Wilson.
Yes.
Gary Lister.
Yes.
And Louis Hall, yes. Okay. And now we will, uh, let's see. We will move to the planning commission. Yes.
If someone needs to motion, that, why not someone make that first motion?
Right, I'm sorry, I had to get to the right page.
Um, I move to enter public hearing to consider ordinance number twenty twenty four dash oh three regarding special use permit application. One dash SUP dash twenty twenty four.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in, uh, uh, the vote will be Mary Hansen.
No, it's discussion.
I'm sorry, discussion, is there any discussion?
Not at this point.
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, and then the vote, Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Katie Wilson.
Yes.
Gary Lister.
Yes.
And Louis Hall, yes. Okay, we'll have now the presentation by the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'd like to start, um, this evening, uh, on a note of personal privilege. Um, outside of this public hearing, I'd like to recognize that, uh, your town clerk, uh, and your clerk for the planning commission, Martha Rodenbert, has completed her, uh, certification course and, uh, as a planning commissioner. So, um, that's a program that's, uh, been around a long, long, long time. I think I was in the third or fourth class myself, but that was in the last century. Um, and, um, it's moved over from Virginia Tech to VCU, my alma mater, for graduate school. And, um, she's all learned up now. And so without any further ado, I'm going to turn the podium over to her and let, no. Just kidding, she's, she's, uh, she's had a very busy six weeks of reading and study. So to the matter at hand, this is the staff report for the, uh, special use permit application oh one for your twenty twenty four calendar year. The location is generally known as, uh, one six one Cross Street. The property is owned by Pickett Homes LLC and is represented tonight by Sean Pickett. The request, and let me take a moment here and be very clear here. The B one zoning district allows retail sales of food and drink. It is only the arcade portion and the restaurant portion that is subject to the special use permit this evening. And it's two uses, but you're on a, uh, piece of property that doesn't have what you would call the density requirement because you have water in sewer. Uh, it's not like you have to have one acre for one use, one acre for another use, one acre for a third use. It's, it's basically an unlimited density. The acreage is point one seven acres. Um, the zoning district is, uh, B one. And what we have found out is that it's, it's B one along Cross Street to a certain point, but only for a depth of about eighty feet. This operation is within that commercial. The remainder of the property, the backside of the property, like many of its adjacent property owners, is actually zoned R one. The adjacent composition of uses is a mix of commercial and residential, also zone B one with a depth of eighty feet, uh, with the remainder either R one or wholly, uh, R one zone properties. Now, the comprehensive plan designates the area as general retail and services. Supporting language for this request, aligning to this designation, follows under economic goals and objectives. The goal is to expand the economic activities commensurate with the existing character and lifestyle of the local community. The objectives, I want to take these slightly out of order, is to encourage commercial operations in areas so designated on the future land use, which it is. Encourage a diversified, vibrant environment through mixed-use development, which combines residential, commercial, and recreational functions. And to provide an environment, environment for the types of employment that will sustain local workforce. The zoning compliance, there are, uh, no setback requirements in the B one zoning district. And there's a, and you, this will come into play in a moment. And there's a thirty five foot height limit, which this two-story building does not exceed. Various state agencies and contractors serving the county, uh, serving the town, uh, have been contacted for comments and none were received. Now, uh, you, the town zoning ordinance does not go out and list a specific set of criteria to be considered when you look at a special use permit. It does, however, use a broader, uh, recognition of the authority that you, that's, that's available through the police powers uh, to impose conditions to mitigate adverse situations related to the general health and safety and welfare of those on or about the property. Those are the police powers. Thus, the general health, safety, and welfare, um, extends to the nature and condition of all adjacent uses and structures and the effect upon them by the use proposed. Okay, as this is an existing mixed-use area, the proposed use can be considered generally compatible. The standards of consideration continue to consider impacts on the impairment of light and air. Condition six proposed addresses light. Condition ten is offered for privacy and security of adjacent occupants, although it will have some impact on air movement. Now, uh, condition six, as I said, does address light, how much light is produced by the business, um, and trying to subdue that light, you know, there's a, uh, a lumen, uh, uh, or wattage limit. Uh, but we also want to be, uh, cognizant of movement around the property on the outside, so make sure that there's, uh, ample lighting for, for, for safe movement around the property. And then, uh, that other condition, uh, there was, um, relative to the privacy fence, uh, to kind of, uh, demarcate what, what property is, uh, assigned to the business and what property is that of the adjacent property owners. Now, street congestion is noted and waived via condition nine. Uh, but condition seven is designed to prevent sidewalk signage that impedes protection and traffic flow. So let's talk about condition number nine. Uh, there is a provision in the zoning ordinance that requires new restaurants to have one parking space for each three seats in the restaurant. The town does recognize off-street parking is difficult as a result of a historic zero lot line construction, which means there's no setback. You build right up to the lot line, uh, where you have wall to wall to wall to wall, uh, construction. That doesn't allow for any off-street parking on the property. As no other restaurants in the area have been required to provide adequate parking spaces based on the number of seats available, condition nine is proposed, which essentially waives off the parking requirement. The comprehensive plan, I've already spoken to that, is noted to be generally compatible. And the preservation of land value is also one of those considerations you have to take into effect. Uh, and we're trying to enhance that by the general appearance condition number eight, which requires a little bit of cleaning up of the property. Uh, most of this is on the backside, it's not visible, you could see it when you go around to the backside. Um, and a lot of that is related to ongoing construction and improvements. Uh, the, um, uh, most of the conditions proposed are done to avoid nuisances such as the, uh, condition of noise. So we've talked about no outside speakers, uh, that would be condition number five. Uh, condition number two, the hours of operation, those are as proposed by the applicant, not only hours of operation, but the days of operation. In condition number eleven, uh, can control or odor, which is basically through their trash management. Of particular note, conditions three and four, as they relate to aspects of the use proposed, board games and throwback video are arcade games. Uh, may be suitable, but skilled games are of concern, if only for the attention given them in recent, uh, journal assembly sessions. And skilled games are typically those where, uh, you walk away with money, credit, gift cards, those sorts of things. Um, there's a general prohibition on those in that condition. Um, the, uh, condition, uh, three is sta, uh, is a standard, but it's detailed to adhere to youth protection standards. And the remaining conditions, one and two, are standard. We have received several comments, um, about this request, those have all been copied and made part of your packet. Uh, and they've been, and when they were mailed out, we haven't received any since, uh, they were mailed out. I'd be happy to take any questions you have at this time.
I'd like a clarification on the size of the lot that we're talking about, because in one place you say it's one point seven one acres. And in the staff report, it says it's point one seven.
It is point one seven.
One point one seven, okay. How far is the closest residential, uh, residence?
Um, I, I, I didn't pull the tape on it, I, I can't, I can't tell you. The, the closest residential zone property is, is a budding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, one question I have is, I, I wasn't aware, or I guess I have a, I have a concern about somebody selling beer and wine without off, also offering food. I understood from the application that they are hoping to in the future offer food. I don't know if I'm, it seemed a little inconsistent and, um, my understanding was that ABC required you to, to sell both and, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of a bar that just sells wine and beer and games. I guess I'd love your input on that.
Well, I, I, I would, I would say that condition relative to being in compliance with all state federal rules and regulations and laws would, would cover that. Um, as far as the timing of, of when, um, each of these activities comes in, I'm going to defer to the, to the applicant. But, um, that, that is the general law in Virginia, you have to, you can't have a, you can't have a pure bar, you have to be able to serve some sort of food.
Well, could we not add that? Could we not add that as a condition that, you know, the, the wine and beer and food restrictions, I don't know, something? The, I, I guess I appreciate the concern about youths, given our teenagers, but the, I wonder if that's not something that might be worth our calling out as well.
I, I'm not, I'm not so sure we can interject ourselves
Yeah.
in between the ABC, yeah. I, I think it's there, if you look at, if you look at condition number three, and I'll read it. Um, comply with all local county, state, and federal laws, rules, regulations concerning the conduct of its business to include, but not limited to, Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Alcohol Beverage Control Authority with particular compliance to alcohol service in the presence of underage persons.
I understand that, but I guess if we're calling out underage persons, which is also covered by ABC, why couldn't we also call out underage persons and the provision of alcohol without food or something?
Because the law already requires that.
But it also requires that bars and restaurants have provisions with respect to underage patrons. Like, why call out that and not?
On the other, I don't know.
Well, I had, I, I'll, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I, I called it out because I knew that people had concerns with it.
Yeah.
I would norm, I would normally have not put that phrase in there. I would have, normally I would have ended it with beverage control authority, end of, end of, that would have been the end of it. But tried to acknowledge the concerns that I was hearing, I put it in there. And I, again, I think that was just, you know, a little bit of add-on to what's already in place relative to the rules and regulations of the Virginia Alcohol and Beverage Control Authority.
And that, that's the concerns you heard from the neighbors when you talked, I mean, I can see in the emails, you went and talked to neighbors, that's.
No ma'am, I did, I didn't, no ma'am, I did not go and talk to neighbors, I was reading the comments that we were receiving.
Okay, gotcha.
We, we, we had people coming to the office and I would talk to them, but basically I'm, I'm basing, I'm basing everything off of written comments. And no, I, it, it is, um.
No, no, I'm not criticizing, I, I just, you could tell that there's, from the comments, they talk about having, you know, they have views, and that, that's what I was asking, were you basing it on? So that's all.
Yes, I was basically off of those views, yes. But I, I wasn't going out soliciting, that I was basically, whatever was coming in, I was, you know, trying to recognize that.
May I ask another point of clarification on the first page of the staff report under request? I'm not clear, it sounds like it's, it's two phases maybe to allow for retail sales of food and drink together with arcade and board games, access permitted with a special use permit. And subsequently, a restaurant. If, are we voting on both?
Yes.
In this one, so we're voting on the, that and the restaurant, even though we know nothing about the restaurant?
I would defer to what's in the application in the applicant, but under our definition of restaurant, if you serve food, it doesn't matter the amount, the type, if you serve something, it's a restaurant.
It's a food establishment.
It's a, it's a, yes.
Yeah.
So, and again, the retail sales of food and, and drink, okay, so let's stop right there. If anybody wanted to open up a store and resell Stewart sandwiches, Coca-Colas, and bags of chips, have at it, okay? When you start preparing food and serving it, then you become a restaurant. So, uh, I, I think in, um, Mr. Pickett's business plan, he might want to start with just the retail sales. And then move to the arcade and then move to the restaurant. I, I, again, I'm going to defer to him, but what he wanted to cover were these three things. One's already allowed by right, the arcade requires a special use permit, the restaurant requires a special use permit. And because there's no use per density requirement set out in your zoning ordinance, knock it out in one hearing, knock it out in one application.
Well, and am I right that that may be how he gets around the, you have to serve food, and then if he's a retail operation, you know, he, he may be appropriate in selling, I don't know, the retail side, in selling snacks and food and beer and wine and that kind of thing, right?
It, it could be, yes ma'am. Um, because he does have some food available.
Yeah.
That could be, you know, go along.
Like Urbana Trading, for example.
How old is he, taking my ABC manager's license? Um, Gary, to get an ABC license, they're gonna vet what the sales are. For a restaurant, he has to have X amount of food sales, or they will take the license, he won't be granted a license without proof that there will be ample food sales. And he's not going to get an, you can get an on license or an off license, he is not going for an off license. That would be like a convenience store.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Sure.
That's, I think I'd miss the retail, I don't know, that, I'd miss the, the first part of his plan, so this is helpful.
Any others? Okay, now we'll have the applicant's presentation, Pickett.
Hey, how y'all doing? Um, I guess I just want to put everybody at ease, we're not looking to open up slash a bar, party place, this is low-key families, games, as far as, um, your question, Gary, about the restaurant, what we eventually want to do is an oyster bar with charcuterie boards. Um, my wife and I, we don't want to compete with any of the restaurants in here with more of a snack bar. We suggested the, you know, throwback and style of, you know, type arcade games to, you know, kids need something to do during the day. It's, it's really a family atmosphere is what we're trying to create. Uh, we purchased the building last year. You know, with an intent that the storefront was, you know, a business. As far as my neighbor at one sixty seven Cross, I actually paid to have his sewer line removed because I told him we're going to be putting a business here. Um, Roy Kahn, the old commissioner, or the town administrator, he liked the idea, we told him we wanted to keep that small-town charm with the storefront. And we went back and forth, my wife and I, with a lot of different ideas to keep that down instead of creating an apartment downstairs. As far as the back is concerned, uh, Mr. Costin has walked, uh, upstairs, downstairs, all around the property. There is nothing, the back is a private office, so the only way you really go in is, is through the front. Um, it's a really small space. Uh, the oyster bar, charcuterie is the long-term goal with, and we want to sell just beer and wine from Virginia. Um, that's another thing that's important to us, we want to get our oysters from the local watermen because I'm a history teacher, I've taught for twenty-one years, my family actually was from Middlesex in the sixteen hundreds, and they continued to move up to Fort Royal, Virginia, and Caroline County, where they eventually settled. So, and eventually, you know, we hope to retire here one day as well, so thus, that was the long-term goal for us. So yes, we, it does fall into the restaurant category because, you know, we'll have oysters and charcuterie boards. Um, we're not looking to bring any craziness to the town, just something more of a family atmosphere. Um, I know parking is an issue, um, but it's just, we did a lot of work on that place and I was there probably every day this summer, and I can tell you the, the house, um, I think it's one fifty one Cross Street, the little small gray building, there's three spots right there that they never, I never saw anybody park there the whole time we were working. Um, and I, and to paraphrase, uh, I know there's two houses right beside us, one is actually zoned business commercial. I mean, I can't help it that he has a residence in the town. Same thing when we bought our property, that was originally commercial, our business, as well, that he's owned for residential. I mean, I can't decide what they do or whatnot, you know? This is kind of the last spot, if I'm not mistaken, now, Mr. Costin, with the town, one sixty one Cross, I guess that's the last, to my knowledge, I mean, I thought the one building beside us was still, um, at one sixty seven, was still zoned business commercial, but I guess not, but I can't choose. Aides Place, yes, I can't decide what he did with his or not, but he knew, I mean, I even paid for a sewer line and Mr. Kahn gave me, you know, a permit to have a driveway there one day, so. I'll take some questions from you guys, but like I said, this is not some party or anything like that. Um, we just want to have a low-key spot for the town to enjoy. And when people come visit, I mean, I told Mr. Kuss, we don't have an oyster bar, and this is Urbana, which to me is the capital of, uh, oysters in Virginia. So, that's the long-term, but, and everything beer and wine will be from Virginia, um, places, so.
What would your plan be to keep it from being a party place? Because I mean, you can't always tell who's going to come into a business, right?
Right. Um, I mean, somebody could come in here and go crazy, we don't, we don't know. Um, my plan is to keep it low-key quiet, we plan to staff two people at all times, um, we want to bring in families, kids, late board games and things, they're getting really popular in, in Richmond, um, that's where my wife kind of got the arcade games to give the kids something to do. The adults can try some beer or wine from another region of Virginia or somewhere local, I mean, without having to drive, you know, all over the place, you know, that's the long-term goal. We got the, uh, arcade games, and that's where we, the retail snacks had come in, you know, just sell some, and all that stuff's going to be made in Virginia too. Um, to start off with, until we get beer and wine license. And eventually go with our raw oysters and, uh, charcuterie boards. So.
John, can I jump in?
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Can I just, I just want to apologize, I didn't know you were there, or I would have waited and asked you questions rather.
It's all good, no, please.
So I, like, my questions are answered and I, I apologize because it sort of seemed like I was on the aggressive and I, I literally did not, because I can't see, I didn't know you were there, so I apologize.
Oh, it's all good. And I'm, my wife and I have met you before, this, uh, Gary.
No, and you're, you're a cute little boy with the dancing Christmas tree, I remember.
That's right.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I'm just looking through my wife's notes, what she want. Um, as far as the back owners, yeah, I agree, we're still kind of work in progress, we had a, probably a six hundred pound oil tank, we had to get out of there, it was a, it was a lot of work to get that place in business, I know, I looked at some of the comments about property values going down, I don't think anything that's gonna, I think they're only going up and around, they're not going down. And especially with younger people and other people who want to help promote business and help people get here, I mean, I just think that's, you know, the direction.
Is this going to be open year-round, or?
Yes, we do plan, um, now, it's going to cut back in the winter time, but, uh, we do plan on keeping it, and I don't know about three, four days a week, but yes, maybe like a Saturday night or something through the winter months, um, if we can sustain it. But definitely Memorial Weekend through the Oyster Festival, um, Thursday through Sunday, Sundays will be low-key. And we don't plan on nine o'clock, probably pushing, it may even be eight o'clock on a Friday or Saturday night before we close down. And, and my wife and I tell you, we, there's great restaurants here. We like, we want to help support those restaurants, help support the other businesses in town. Um, help with street signs and things that need repair here, I mean, we're here to invest in this community, my wife and I. So.
Would it be bottles and cans, or would you have draft beer as well?
Draft beer taps, eventually, yes.
And the wines would be Virginia wines also?
Oh, all Virginia wines, they're, yeah.
Have you thought about where the sign would be?
Yes, we have a big window in the storefront, and I think my wife had talked about getting something kind of sketched on there.
Okay.
As far as, yeah, we're not going to put no knee on.
Slim.
We have a slim post, we could put like a metal sign or something there, but I think she wanted to use that big window and put something, something in there. So.
How many occupants can you have at once, like?
Oh, it's, I, that's a good question too, um, we only have one bathroom for the store to use, so I believe it's fifteen, only fifteen at a time. And that's really, to get a dozen people, that's fun. So, not, we're not looking to get fifty people or, you know, I think you got little jimmies and something different for that, if you want that type of atmosphere. So.
Okay. Any other questions on commissions? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, yeah.
Okay, now we'll go to the public comment. And first one on the list will be Boyd Wild.
Hey, Louis. Commissioner, commissioner, what do you call commissioners?
I don't know.
But, uh, I just, um, so, so my questions have kind of been answered, um, so that's good. Parking's still a concern for me, I know Mr. Costin's, uh, said it was, um, then the rights to have parking on the street and that type of thing. But it's still a concern for people living in the neighborhood and safety and that type of thing, regardless of what is, um, a right or, or, um, because of the zoning area they live in, it's still, it's still a, that's, it's still a an issue, I don't know, I wouldn't call it a problem, it could be a problem, but still an issue since you're living in a, um, on the edge of a from commercial to residential. There, um, the two properties to the left are still commercial zone, and, uh, one being my dad's property up front, that's a commercial lot, so just for future um, thought on that. Um, I can see, uh, that was another question I had, he, he answered that. Oh, one, one concern would be for, uh, does, uh, does you anticipate any type of, uh, patio, um, thing outside where people are served and, uh, music and, uh, that type of thing, heard no speakers outside from somebody.
Didn't have to answer your question.
Yeah, sure.
Absolutely not, no.
Okay.
Say your concern.
Oh, my, okay. Sure, that'd probably be a little better, so that was, um, outdoor speakers and, uh, patios, um, so they're not, not going to be any patio. So they're not, not going to be any patios or decks where people can hang out and drink, that's a concern. Um, talked about um, you, um, won't be any speakers. Um, also the, the last, my last concern is uh, skilled machines. Um, so that was not legal or whatever. The governor today put forward a um, a resolution to ban them, but uh, I doubt if it's going to pass. So they'll, I think they'll be around in the future, so I think it's something that needs to be addressed in writing anyway. That people have the way of forgetting things after a while. Um, but parking, parking is still um, issue. Um, I think that um, should be considered. I mean, I, I know when his application, he said there's parking across the street and this type of thing, public parking. Well, you know, that's, that's not really public parking, that's owned by people. Um, 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 the gallery owns most, a lot of it and also the, um, I'm not sure who's going to buy that bill or the other, he'll own the other part. But uh, thank you very much for your, your consideration. Appreciate it.
Okay. Do we wait until?
Do all the public, all public. And then the applicant addresses different times.
Thank you. Okay, next is Jonathan.
We're together.
Okay.
No. Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't read the last name.
I'm trying to small to squeeze it all in. Hello. Um, you answered a lot of questions already. Um, my concerns are if it's, if it's going to have an ABC license, that means we have to have eighteen and older staffing it. Is that right? By law you have to be, or is it eighteen or twenty-one? So that's one thing, I know, I'm sorry, answers are coming. Um, how do we control the crowd? Because I'm thinking during our busy season with, you know, the campground open, um, and tourists, it's probably going to be hard to have fifteen to twenty. So I'm wondering how we control how many are inside because that, you know, safety is an issue. And I'm pretty sure there's fire codes that have to be met. And then my other concern, Boyd just touched on, um, I think Governor Youngkin is getting ready to sign a bill to allow the electronic, I think they're referred to as skill games. At the risk of sounding like an old lady, I'm a grandmother, I don't see skill games in the presence of pin, uh, you know, pinball and ski ball, which I love. Um, and games directed at children, that, that seems to be in conflict to me as a family, you know, establishment. So I guess I'd like some clarification if there are going to be skill games, because I kind of feel like that should be in a separate area. Um, and from the diagram, it looks like the restaurant, you'll be able to, to view the, the playing area. Um, Jonathan, anything else you want me to add? So, okay. I think that's it. Um, let me, let me look really quick. Yeah, crowd control, skill games, and the age of the staff, I think is kind of important. Um, because I, you know, you'll want to think everybody's going to be on their best behavior, but where alcohol is concerned, it's not always the case. All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, I got you. Okay, John, I mean, oh, John.
How y'all doing? Um, I'm here, uh, we own, my partner and I own the building across the street, cross street. John Greenwood.
I'm sorry.
And all my tenants have expressed concern. Uh, they've had several comments to where it's public parking, don't worry about it. It's not public parking. We own that building and the property over to the next building. Yeah, when we built the building, we had to have through the town and planning commission, a certain number of parking spots per offices, which we do. We're one of property, a few businesses in town that jumped through the hoops to do that. And we had to leave the right of way for the town, but through traffic. But that's like a twenty-foot right of way and the rest of that is all parking for cross-street business center tenants and their customers. Which I have customers that are there at five offices, five tenants, um, and they all have customers in and out, in and out. So my major concern is people are coming down to go to your business and they're going to see the street full and they go, there's an open spot. So how am I going to be assured that they're not going to be using up my tenants? Because I, I'll be honest with you, I don't have the desire to be at home and be called by my tenants three or four times a week saying, my customers can't park. What are you going to do about it? That's my major concern. I'm, I'm for all businesses in town and, you know, we've had that building for, since the early two thousands and we had to jump through hoops to get it. And so I am for business. My concern is I've already had my tenants in an uproar. So what assurances do I have besides me going over and policing it? There's a sign that says cross-street business center, customers only. Now, if you're going down the road and it, because it's only parking on one side of the street, because it's too small. So when all those spots are full and I got two, two spaces there and one of them is scheduled for a one-ten appointment. And she's going to get there at one o'clock and that space is full, so then what she got to do? She's going to have to, it's not public parking, that's way over on the other side. So that's my biggest concern. And like I say, I have five tenants that I have to answer to and they all know during festival time, special events, the rules go out the window. Don't care, people park, don't, you know, I just have to go up and clean up because they aren't the, the neatest people. But Oyster Festival, I used to shut my business down on Thursday through Sunday and just work it. So I know what it is to, you know, to volunteer and enclose your business to do it. And I don't care about the parking on my property where that people use it during events, because there's really no place for people to park. So that's my biggest concern. How do I keep my tenants assured to have space for their customers when they arrive for appointments?
Thank you. Okay, so now we have uh, the applicant back to address concerns.
First thing is uh, no patio, no speakers, any of that outside. Um, and I can, you could put that as a condition to assure you that. As far as the games, um, my wife actually just sent me this before, um, Yalkin has proposed in tougher rules. I mean, we don't, we're not going to have any gambling or any type of those games at all, never. Yeah, just old school arcade games. That's um, so no skill games, no paid games. Um, and then as far as alcohol, I think twenty-one and up should be the correct. Um, I think that's what we're going to be looking for. We're going to need some, you know, good people um, to work. Uh, the other thing for you, uh, I think my wife and I would help pay for signs that says towing enforced or something like that. Okay, well, we can put them. I think they're towing enforced, so they can put them in every spot.
But the, the point is if someone's going to come in and buy something.
Right.
They don't care about that. They're going, I'm going, I'm going in and buy something. That's a spot, that's a.
Right.
So unless I'm over there policing that eight hours a day.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's private traffic.
If we see something, you know, if I'm working or whoever's working, call the tow truck and I can even put that. Another thing is, you know, I'm still learning, you know, about the trolley system. I think encouraged, isn't Rappahannock have a lot of all-street parking over there by the park where no one kind of, I'm not sure. Why don't we encourage people to use the trolley? Um, so, I don't know, but yeah, I would help you, whatever, I can't, no, I, I don't know, I totally.
Yeah, we're not supposed to.
Concerns. Okay, no, I, well, I totally get that concern, but I would definitely encourage people to use the trolley. Um, one question I have for you, does the trolley go to the campgrounds? That takes, okay. So that would be my, my thing is encouraging people to use the trolley. Help, um, my wife and I maybe contribute to put more signs around town or no parking or whatnot. Um, if that helps address, but I know there's always going to be somebody that, you know, wants to toe that line. I, I get it, I do understand, so. But we're more than happy to help and whatever we can to do that, do the parking. I know it's just, any city, any town is parking, it's tough, especially the way they built these towns in the thirties, forties, fifties. Yeah.
Okay. You, you address the outdoor speakers that the patio?
Yeah, no patio.
No patio at all. Does that need to be stipulated or is there even any place for?
There's no place for maybe two chairs and a beast, you know, beast robe table in the front. I mean, maybe that.
What about in the back?
No, there'll never be in the back because it's apart, apartment upstairs and then the office is back, so no one's going in the back at all.
Is there a driveway on the left-hand side?
Yes, yeah. That's where the driveway would be, yes. And there's a parking, maybe get two cars on the parking pad now.
But it sounds like you wouldn't mind a stipulation that said no patio.
Oh, you can put that stipulation, a condition if you wanted to, that no one's going to be in the back.
What would you feel about a, a stipulation that there would be no skilled game, skill games or games for money?
Oh, that's, yeah, that's perfectly fine as well.
Regardless of what the governor does.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want, that's a whole nother can of worms. Um, the big thing is for us is, you know, we would like the long-term goal to have a nice oyster bar, charcuterie and Virginia wines and beers. Um, and I don't think people are going to come there and get, I mean, you're always going to have somebody, but I think it'd be more of a like a tap room, taste different things, try some oysters and head over to Little Jimmy's or something different and go about their business.
Could you address the crowd control issue one more time? I think you said a dozen was like.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's all with one bathroom per rule, I think it's fifteen and under. I could be wrong on that, but I think that's what the requirement is. If you only have one bathroom, um, fifteen and under, maximum occupancy.
So that would be up to you to say, okay, we have fifteen people in here, or if you got fourteen and a couple comes in.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, you know, or you know, you have a host or somebody there and says, we're at occupancy, like every other restaurant, get a reservation. And that's something my wife and, I mean, this could be, maybe it turns into something more upscale down the road and, you know, so.
I think the health.
I think the health department does that too.
Yes. And I think you have to post a sign, um, right at your restaurant where maximum occupancy and all of that stuff happens. So, and as far as the main seating, if you've ever been in there, it's um, it's basically going to, it's going to be a big bar and a couple seats, play some board games, that's about it.
It said subsequently a, a restaurant, what kind of food would it be in the?
You have to make a restaurant because we're serving raw oysters and then charcuterie board. If you're familiar with charcuterie board, like we'd have one, maybe called the Virginian, you have a, like a board, you put ham, peanuts, um, maybe some blackberries or something.
So no cooked, no.
No, nothing's going to be fried or cooked.
Because those are.
Yeah, everything's going to be refrigerated for, yeah.
No. Yes.
Sorry. That's all right.
Okay, um, are there any concerns to be addressed by the staff?
Just to clarify a couple of things. The trolley is seasonal, but it does go into Bethpage and makes a loop around. Um, I want to draw your attention to condition number four. As to arcade operations, no game shall be offered that results in the award of monetary prizes or any, uh, in any form to include, but not limited to cash, gift cards or credit in any form. I, that's as close to a skill game as I can get it. Now, having said that, as the commission knows, there are times when the general assembly comes in and governors change, general assemblies change, the rules change. So, um, you know, uh, as long as this is there, it can be enforced. However, if they come in, um, they be in the general assembly and say, okay, um, you know, no, no pun intended, all bets are off with skill games. Anybody can do them anywhere, anytime, anyhow. Um, there's, there's usually a period of time where they say after a certain date. If, so if we've already got a provision in place, that provision's going to ride as long as that, that use is there, okay? As to the uses, uh, what's a special exceptions granted? I know everybody says it runs with the land, it does as long as that use is there. If that use is terminated for more than two years, it falls under the state grandfathering provisions and you've lost the use. Okay, after two years, you lose the use of, if it's not used, if it's not active. All right, so that takes care of number four. Um, number five, um, I, I scratched out this real quick. To limit the amount of noise, no outside speaker system shall be utilized. Let's add, and no outside service provided. Would that take care of the outside issue?
Seating or service?
Let's say seating or service. And no outside seating in service provided. And that was, that was all I had. If you all were, if you all were good with that amendment to the condition number five.
Do you have any thoughts about the comment about additional signage?
I think that would be great if, if the two people, if the two parties could work it out. Um, I don't know if you can, I'm a little uncomfortable imposing off-site improvements, because that's what that amounts to. You're asking, you're, it's an off-site improvement. So if they can work it out, I think that's great. I'd be a little reluctant for you, for you all to recommend in the council to adopt a condition that says, okay, you have to do something else on somebody else's property.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So since there are limited occupancy, say they had a wait, like somebody wanted to get in, like something different made those benches out front. If you put in that no outside seating and service provided, does that mean they couldn't have a bench for people to wait for somebody to come out and then somebody else to go in?
That is.
I would, I would say that that's, no outside seating in service means you can't seat and be served. But you can.
Is that a Virginia law though, that you can't be served a beer outside unless you have a permit to do that? Or is that?
I'm pretty sure, I think you also have to have a very confined, you know, defined area like.
Serve outside where the benches are and people are waiting. Because I feel like it would be unfair to impose a rule, like you couldn't wait outside if there are people coming and going because restaurants turn over.
Right.
You know, there should be some ability.
All right, so how about in no outside seating with service?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so what I had that number five is to limit the amount of noise, no outside speaker system shall be utilized and no outside seating provided with service.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, you gotta ask her.
No, maybe there's going to be another public hearing with the, depending on what happens here tonight.
No counsel.
With counsel.
Right.
Well, just. Unless there's something.
Regardless, let me, let me clarify this then. So at this, when you close your public hearing and you've taken your public comment and you all are debating, you have a few options. Option number one is to approve. Option number one, two is to approve with conditions. Option number three is to deny. Option number uh, four is to defer. And I believe it's sixty days that you can defer. Because we've advertised the public hearing with the town council for Thursday night, that public hearing will go forward. Their options will then be to, they'll, they'll have to defer because by state law, they have to receive your recommendation or the clock has to run.
If we defer, they have to defer, you mean?
Yes.
Yes.
If you defer, they have to defer. Okay, but they can have their public hearing.
Point of clarification, when you say that we can approve with conditions, i- is that what you mean by the conditions we've stated and you've added? Okay, just checking, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we need a motion?
We need a motion.
Um, let me see. I move to close public hearing to consider ordinance twenty-two-four dash oh-three regarding special use permit number one dash SUP dash twenty-two-four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have discussion? Any discussion? Okay, we need to vote. Mary Hansen.
Yes.
Don Drayer.
Yes.
Katie Wilson.
Yes.
Carrie Lister.
Yes.
And Louis Hall, yes. Okay.
You want me to make the motion?
If you would.
Okay. Okay, I make the motion to approve with condition, special conditions, ordinance number twenty twenty four dash oh three regarding special use permit application one dash SUP dash twenty twenty four, including conditions as noted in Mr. Costin's revision.
Okay, do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, then our vote. Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Don Drayer?
Yes.
Katie Wilson?
Yes.
Carrie Lister?
Yes.
And Louis Hall, yes. Okay. That concludes the public hearing. And I guess at this point, we would go back into our regular monthly planning commission meeting.
Right. So now this goes before town council on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. More?
Mrs. Lister, I'll, I'll, I'll get these to you. So just yesterday was the day that the governor had to act on pending legislation and get, get everything out. Okay. There are two sets here of acts from the general assembly. One came up through the House, one came up through the Senate. I'm going to walk those through with you. The first one is a two pager. That one, the governor has signed. Okay, I'm going to draw your attention to paragraph D. And I'm going to hand you the Senate version.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Am I back to you? All right, so the two pager is the House version, which the governor signed. The Senate version, the one pager, is, I, I marked it up with the governor's recommendations, which indicates that he's willing to sign it if it has these provisions in it. And I, I marked it with my handwriting and I apologize if you can't read my handwriting, but you're in good company, neither can my mom. So what's interesting here is that those two paragraphs, one speaks to what the local ordinances can and cannot do relative to imposing special use permissions and, and special use, special exception. In short, it makes it a use by right. But if you go back to the House version, that same paragraph talks about lease, lessor, sub lessor relationships. So it's a collision there. Now, so I, I think the issue is still unsettled, but I think the writings on the wall that we're going to be restricted in how we regulate short term rentals. Very interesting is the provision of paragraph B two.
Which version?
Both versions in this case.
Oh, okay.
Both versions in this case, paragraph B two, basically says, anything that we do do exempts real estate agents.
Yeah.
So if you're doing a short term rental, but you basically hired a real estate agent to do it, then they can do what you need them to do.
All right. So they could bypass any kind of restrictions that we might.
Right.
Use in a special exemption.
Right.
So this goes back to what I'd said earlier about, as you all know, rules change, governors change, general assemblies change. And so this is a little bit of another chip away at local government zoning authority.
Do you have any, any idea what's driving that? Martha knows? Okay.
Essentially, what this one does is for people who rent their spot. So for instance, if Mary's tenant should be gone for a little while, this would, if the owner gave me permission, gave her tenant permission to rent out.
Oh, you could sublet.
What is happening with people like the resort places where people, when we're renting condos and stuff, but would be going out of town, this would allow the renter to rent out the property, sublet it as, that that's a sentence. Right now, you can't.
What if you have a guest house?
Keeping that, I wonder.
I don't know.
Say that you could, you can.
I mean, you have a guest house right on the property where you live. Would that, would it, would it apply there?
I would think it'd apply there, yeah.
It's just mind boggling to me that our legislatures would think that localities would not have needs and opinions about managing their towns.
Problem with short term rentals in a different way.
Some of this from.
Right. But if you were able to enact local ordinances, then you could address what your locality was experiencing. But if we can't have local ordinances, then we can't do that.
Or we're blocked on certain provisions, you know. So.
It's a government intrusion versus.
It's government intrusion on government.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
On government.
So, and you know, and, and, and I've had very good conversations with delegate Hodges on this. In fact, he and I and the mayor are meeting tomorrow. And just kind of, it's, I've, I've talked to him on the phone, this is more of a sort of a meet and greet, but we have some issues that we're going to bring forward, including, including, including this. And I'm going to point out to him that conflict in, in that paragraph D. So you know, and again, this is, this is something I've seen throughout my career. I may have mentioned you before, Matthews, it became, you couldn't restrict manufacturing. You had to find what everybody calls a mobile home, you had to define as a manufactured home. And then you had to allow them in your agricultural zoning districts. And so it's just, you know, and as I told the delegate, the problem with this is when people get upset with stuff like this, they don't go to the delegate or the senator, they go here.
Does this address zoning in any way? So could it be in any of our zoning districts or is it only residential or business or?
Go back to the, the one that I marked up, the hand marked up one, that paragraph D. No local ordinance enacted after December thirty one, twenty twenty three or any subsequent amendment shall require special exception, special use or condition.
Residential dwelling.
For the use of a, as it's short term rental. Yeah, so it is impacting the local zoning toolbox.
It's not limited to residential. It's used to use as residential dwelling. So it doesn't say anything about can't be in B one or can't be in B two or anything like that. It doesn't say that.
No, because what we call, what we call B one and B two, somebody else calls B three and B four.
True, that's true, that's true.
But this only applies to housing where someone actually lives, right?
Nope, that's not what it says.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I, I think once, yeah.
It's really conflated.
Because there, there's.
Used as a property by the owner.
Right.
Right.
So there are, there are restrictions being placed, but there, there are restrictions, there are areas, there are. It's all situational, you know, it's very situational. So in one set, you know, you would have to say, okay, well, this applies, but it doesn't apply to another situation.
So, so in, there are some cases, I guess, where a person has to rent out their house for financial reasons.
Are you talking?
For whatever, like medical reasons or whatever, they, they're get, they get in dire straits and they have to rent their house out, right? And so you can't restrict someone like that, is that what they're saying?
Is that short term, is that, exactly, is it a short term rental or a long term?
Is what we're talking about here.
Or a weekend, I mean, it could be, I mean, yeah, yeah, thirty, thirty days.
Thirty days or less is what it said.
So I think in, in your example of somebody needs some additional income and they, even if they rent out a room, it's more of a long term rental than it is a short term rental.
That's it, so that isn't the same.
So it's a whole different ball.
Thirty days or less is what they say.
Okay, so.
Wow.
This is still a work in progress, but we, the mayor and I, like I said, the mayor and I will be talking with delegate Hodges tomorrow and we'll bring this up and kind of reemphasize, you know, he voted against it, which was what we asked him to do, but it, it passed. And I, I think there are enough votes there with just the governor, with the governor signing off on one and suggesting a tweak on the other one, it's probably going to go, go through.
Are we, oh yeah, okay.
Comprehensive plan update. So I got absolutely nowhere with VCU. But I found out that because my wife went there, she said, call ODU. And so I did, did the yes dear and called ODU and found out that they have a urban studies certificate program. So you have a certificate program, you have an undergraduate degree, you have the, the master's degree. ODU apparently is breaking into the urban studies thing and they have a certificate program. So I actually spoke to one of the professors, they have a proposal. I kind of wrote up for them what we're looking for. Either this is an intern for the summer to come in and really crank out, you know, a good first draft on a, on a comprehensive plan. And or it might be a class project in the fall. So he's kind of circulating it around through the political, and this is through their political science department, but also they're tied into their GIS or geography department. So, and it would be nice if we can get both of those skill sets because some of the mapping could be upgraded a bit. So I've got some feelers out to ODU and they, they've, they've been responsive. So I feel pretty good about that. I've also been speaking to a colleague who's trying to get back into the, the business after delving over into an NGO, a non governmental organization and, and raising her kids. Going to be talking with her this week, having her come in, drive around. She may be willing to put us together a proposal and, and if, if the ODU thing doesn't come to fruition, that's a backup plan. And I have a backup plan for her, so involving the main street.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So I'll be happy to take any questions, but that's about all I can tell you right now.
That's good, thanks.
Street sign status, there is a public hearing Thursday night on adopting pretty much a wholesale rewrite of the street namings, house numbering provisions. This will align us with the county's ordinance. And the county has said if we align with their ordinance, they'll pick up the tab. So we have, that ordinance has been advertised and a public hearing's Thursday night. If you will, you have the ordinance there in front of you. Yeah, but it's basically, it's just a wholesale rewrite of that section of the code, that chapter of the code. But it will get us in line. Once the public hearing's done, council acts on it. I send it over, I send it over to the county and it's in their hands. Now, there'll still be coordination between, if we were to have like a new subdivision come in with new street names, we'd still have to kind of work through the county with that to make sure, which is fairly standard for, it's, it's just to avoid nine one one conflicts.
A very random and personal question. Our house number is two hundred Cross Street. Bristow's is two hundred Virginia and two hundred Cross Street. And we get their packages all the time. What is their actual address? Is it two hundred Virginia Street? Because they got doors on either side. Because I'm tired of getting their packages. I get them all the time. It is not BJ or whoever is the normal UPS driver. I hope this is not, but anyway, I just didn't know if it's a double.
So there's a double, there's a two, two hundred crosses?
Well, on their packages, a lot of times it says two hundred Cross Street. And I'm like, that's our address. So I don't know why, I, I'm confused as to what their address really is or if somebody typed it into their computer system wrong when they orders things.
That's what it sounds like.
I'll.
Yeah.
I've talked to ladies who work there, but I, I, I don't know who's in charge anymore because that's.
Right.
So.
I'll.
It's not, it's a, it's an annoyance, let's put it that way. I don't, I just didn't know what their address is technically.
I can call the commission of revenue and, and tie it in by tax map and see what, what address do you all have? And I'll, I'll check it out with the.
Because it's confusing for the people who are delivering the packages. And they're like, well, it says two hundred. I said, well, it says Bristow's and more residents and their business and.
I have a question about the numbering of the houses. Is that in order to be in line with the county, do we, are we going to have to change the numbers of all the houses?
No, we just have to, as we coordinate, as we name, if someone, and there are a few empty lots out, you know. Somebody builds a house, it's a, it's a little bit of, it's a little bit of science in terms of, it's a, it's a distance factor. So if you're going out one way, the numbers are going up, you go another way, it's going, the numbers are going, it, it has a, it's all tied to a distance from a certain point. And so you kind of, you've kind of fit them in there. If you look at some really, really urbanized areas, you might see one twenty one and a half because they had to squeeze it in between one twenty one and one twenty two, you know.
Another question. Are we going to have to keep the old poles? Are those going to be, I, I've heard rumors that, that the, we're going to use the old poles and paint them.
I've been focused on signs, you know.
I mean.
Miss Hanson knows, I'm fighting up another pole issue, but, but yeah.
It's a whole new thing.
Yeah. Is it, okay.
Okay.
We do, we do want to retain the old signs though, because we want to auction them off.
Okay.
And so that was one thing we'd actually talk about. And sell the metal, yeah, we'd like to sell the metal to middlesex metals. And we'd like to retain and we'd like the, we'd love to be able to use the sign, the sign sale for something like Main Street or I don't know, something as a fundraiser and auction them off because, you know, people, some people would like to have their, their old street sign.
And be a fundraiser for the town.
Exactly, exactly.
Maybe something related to the park, trying to get money for.
Sure, yeah, I mean, there are so many needs, right? So many needs and so few dollars.
I bet it, the estimated timing on getting all of this done, any idea?
I think this one first.
Can I ask about some old business? And you, you can feel free to say, there, it's not on that list. And you.
It says other business. I'll reserve, I'll, I'll, I'll reserve the right to say, I don't know.
Where are we heading? I'm sure we're nowhere tonight, but there has been significant concern about the, the modification to our B one statute. And we've talked about that lots and lots and lots. And that was with wanting to fix what we saw as loopholes that were created by the change in the ordinance in order to sell the town hall. And we were wanting to fill, to close that loophole so that we don't lose our commercial footprint in the town. So.
And I know that the two issues are slightly different, but I kind of thought we were going in at the same time to knock them. Well.
Yeah.
And but, but the, the, while the issues are slightly different, the process is the same to do a zoning ordinance amendment, so rather than just run one for.
Oh, I see. Oh, I wasn't asking you to, to run it tonight.
Oh, yeah, but, but that, that.
Because it's not, it's not the short term rental issue.
I understand that, but if we're going to go into short term rental, which impacts B one, it does impact B one, then why not take the comprehensive look and, and look at everything? So.
Oh, I see, I see, now I'm tracking.
Get, get the, get the B.
Sorry, I was just being slow.
No, 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 no. Get the, um, get the short-term rental thing from the state, know what they're going to do and then, and then package it all up. Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I add to that though, that the concern is that under the current statute, any, any, the current ordinance, any current business can basically decide, any current commercial business can basically decide to pull out and become residential. And that's, that's a pretty big concern. We have a small commercial footprint and we could lose some pretty significant, significant spaces. So I, especially if we're having to wait to see the ramifications. I, I understand the rationale that it's more efficient to wait, but um, you know, we're taking a risk. I mean, I use as an example, we could close the end and make condos. And I don't think that would be in Urbana's interest, might be in ours. The, and there's other stories like that, what's going to happen with Bristows, with Pat Marshall gone. And, you know, the, just to echo Mary's concern about what are we doing with it? And again, I understand the rationale of trying to do it together, but I do think it's, it, it's perhaps something that we ought to look at.
No argument there. I just want to make one distinction. So there's a couple of drivers here that you, you, that have been mentioned. One is the, the short-term rental. The other is the, the, the old town hall. Okay. Don't forget your zoning ordinance before all of that allowed R one uses into B one.
Yes.
So for X number of years, it's been absolutely nothing keeping anybody from shutting down every commercial structure, every commercial operation and converting it to residential.
Right. Which is part of
So it wasn't just those two things.
No, no, no. It was not just those two things. But remember that before it had to be an associated use.
That's correct.
And now it no longer has to be an associated use. So that's one less restriction.
That's, okay, that's on
B one.
The B one.
That's on the B one.
But you're
But I understand.
That was not tied to that first line. Yeah.
But, but for example, Bristows, they could have always, they could, you're, you're absolutely correct, have always had an apartment. But with the change that was made, they could have, in, instead of having a shop and apartment, just have, have a house, you know, turn it back into a house, turn it into condos, things like that. That's, I mean, Mary, isn't that your recollection of the problem?
Yeah, right.
And we were there for the problem. So, you know, we, we take responsibility for having created it. It's not your, you didn't create the problem, you know, in essence, we did, right?
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. And, 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 you know, uh, good intentions were intended. Um, but, um, you know, I go back to that, um, this, this provision in the B one that has nothing to do with short-term rental, has nothing to do with sale of Old Town. It says any principal use permitted by right in the R one zoning district. Dwellings are, are, are subject to the same lot area and space yard requirements as in the R one. So that opens your door to all the principal uses in the R one into the B one.
Exactly. And that, that's, that's what we're, that's why we're saying, that's what, what we're raising the concern about that was different.
Right.
It's not, it's totally different. I totally hear you. It's totally different than short-term rental, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, um, but to, um, um, Ms. Hanson's point, okay, workload has, has a lot to do with it. Yeah.
No, I, I understand.
workload has a lot to do with it.
I feel an obligation to keep
Keep it going.
Keep it going. And so it's not personal.
Oh, no, no, I'm not taking it personal.
Okay.
But it's just, it's workload. Yeah.
But wasn't there, and Mary, correct me where I'm wrong, but I thought we had even a draft. So, you know, I, I totally understand you're only one person and, you know, God knows we're lucky enough to have the three staff people that we have. But I thought we even had sort of a, a draft that perhaps we could look at again to see if it.
Ted, actually, when I first met Ted, he had some brilliant ideas for removing a few words in certain parts of our ordinance so that they wouldn't be in conflict with one another. And so that it would cure the problem, the loophole problem that we're talking about. And then he probably had seventy-five other things land on his desk, and so that never happened. But it might be interesting to look at that again.
We can certainly revisit it.
Look at it. And then we can look at the bigger problem that Ted is pointing out with regard to residential uses. But again, that's not, that's not that's residential uses. The short-term rental use is another further downstream issue. So it's not part of the same issue. Yeah.
And we also have the comprehensive rezoning moving forward that involves all the properties here. So that's, that's another one.
That is another one.
That's another one.
Yep, that is another one.
What about, uh, are we, do we need to do something, well, something has to be done about the water main breaks, but uh, is that something that's already in the comprehensive plan that?
Management of our infrastructure, our town infrastructure?
I, I think generally it's probably some, some references. Your, your comprehensive plan that was done twenty twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah. Uh, with a couple of updates. So I, I, I think you can argue it's current, but it, it doesn't address everything to currency. It generally has information about infrastructure and whatnot. Lots changed. Sanitaries gone over to H R, H R S D. A lot of that comprehensive plan talked about your neighboring areas, your, your, you know, your, your reach out areas. Uh, drill really didn't focus, I, I, at my reading, I didn't think it really focused on the town proper. Okay. So water main issues. Here's something you cannot control, but you have to recognize that the two difficult times during the year for water operations are, uh, when you go into freeze and when you come out of freezing, go into thaw. Okay, because the ground moves, the pipes move. And the pipe might survive the shift doing freeze, but when it thaws, it doesn't survive the shift and it, it cracks and opens. Okay. So we can't control the weather. Number two, what we are having a problem with right now, particularly on the Rappahannock, uh, Colorado, uh, section is an old cast iron pipe. Okay, and it's physics. If you've got a pipe and it will hold so much pressure, when it no longer holds pressure, it develops a leak. And when you close that leak, you seal it, you sleeve it, whatever you do, when you close that down, then that pressure comes back up and it finds the next weakest point and the next weakest point and the next weakest point. So, um, you know, at some point you get more, you got more sleeve than you do pipe.
My, part of my concern is V dot talked about, uh, repaving the roads back in the back section with Over street. The rest of the areas back there that haven't already been repaved. If we go to replace those pipes, if we, you know, resurface the roads, then we have to dig them up again to put the pipes down.
V dot's timeline is going to be different than our timeline, you can bet. And if we try to merge the two, somebody's going to have bad roads for longer. Uh, or yeah, you're going to have patchwork. Um, and you know, I've seen it. I know it's just, you know, the world's not a perfect place. But we are responding that, I know we had the breakout last night. Uh, I was there at six thirty and the guy told me, he said, we'll be, we'll be done and out of here by seven. Great. Next thing I know, I'm getting a call at nine thirty going, how come I still don't have water? And it's because it broke down. It broke further down. Uh, and I know that we had another one today, you know. Yep, so we're out there getting it fixed, paying overtime, but we're getting it fixed.
Okay, do we have any other comments, questions?
Old business.
You didn't have anything else, did you? Old business? I think we already, did you, you had an old business statement?
I did, I did. That was it.
That was it.
That was it.
Okay, just confirming.
Yes.
Okay, then, um, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn our, our planning commission meeting.
I second.
Okay, and, um, any discussion? Okay, and the vote? Mary?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
And was, yes. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.